And welcome.
That's my goal.
That's Karen.
Welcome back to the sharing hour and back to you, Karen.
So I was giving Ms. Andy a few minutes to come back into the room as well. But we've got Ann over here, so that'll be A-OK. Better than OK, sorry. So first, I need a little help to figure out what the agenda looks like for the rest of afternoon. So pal Kevin, I need you to flash up what the current agenda is for the afternoon. Sorry.
You're good.
Because I didn't. So I just need all of us to sync up right now. It's 12:30. What? So what I'm trying to ask first is for item fix. We can talk about item four in any order at any time. Five, six, and seven. Do we need to start there? Or? Or I'm worried about if there's time certain because there are other people. Oh, right, you need to get some more caffeine, I forgot. So.
There, we would prefer to go in this order.
Four, five, six, seven.
Yes.
Oh, I can see it here.
Four norms.
OK.
We're great with that. We, no one has to leave early. Everyone is available all afternoon, so we can, we can keep them.
OK.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am all caught up now. Thank you for starting there. First, I want to report out that we did have the small group meeting with Governor Otech and two of her staff. As always, Nick O'Conne and Eamon, both from the meeting this morning and this meeting, are absolutely marvelous, which gives me the opportunity to say that I have, I am always impressed by our staff and greatly appreciate having such marvelous employees here at Washington County. So thank you for your excellence. Vice Chair Thrice, if this discussion and the contract with OHA work continues, that's another base you'll need to cover. And so you and I should sit down and get you what you need.
OK.
Should things continue beyond June 18th at 5:00 PM. So. OK, so we're picking up on topic four. Item four. So I'm I'm having a first time experience and struggling with a few things. Under item four on your agenda, there were three bullet items. Calendar visibility, we've already talked about. So if before the end of the week calendars or calendars aren't all visible, we're going to have an even bigger problem. So things need to be fixed.
There are still some that are not.
I haven't had a chance to check this morning. And I was in the whole governor's thing over lunch, so I haven't even.
I was more meaning generally, like coming into the.
Visibility means seeing what the appointments are as well as.
Yep, yep, yep.
Why those other than our staff assistants?
Yeah, it's everyone.
Yeah, OK, so yeah.
Yep.
OK.
So. You know, I don't want to be put in the position of having to ask the question, what, what are people hiding?
Well, I think it's important that that be available just because there's a lot of moving parts. Our staff assistants have to be able to see if we ask for meetings with each other, they have to be able to see your availability and and whatever else you've got going on, just because it helps them. And so, yeah, that's the reason I
Yep.
I've been pretty transparent about mine, so. The problem I have, quite frankly, is there are externals that have access to my calendars. Colpak, Northwest Act, they jump on my calendar. They're external appointment requests.
Oh, requests.
Yeah.
Not people.
No, no, but it's, but again, it's.
You scared me for a second.
Messes made it up. That they put appointments on my calendar that.
Oh, and they don't check, they don't work with you to check out a bit. Say hi on them.
She, she tells them and I tell them, she reminds them.
Um, they're not above us writing a letter to executive directorates of committees to say, look, we do a lot. Please work with these key people to make sure availability works. We have a mutual interest here. So.
Yep.
Yeah, if, if we need to remind them of our mutual interests, we can do that.
Just remind them that they have to go through Maida to get them on calendar.
You'll let me know that we need to send that boilerplate off to somebody, OK? OK, terrific, thank you so much. Remember, it's June, there are certain practices we check in on halfway through the year. I haven't seen a need to bring the committee list forward, but this is the reminder. You all, and we went through state, we went through lobbying training. You're always, no matter where you are, you walk in with the Washington County brand. You always have to represent the board position before expressing your own individual interest. And you have to respect your other board liaison colleagues who we have had covering different domains. So the other thing is, as I have shared with you previously, I, well, maybe not with all of you. I think it's high time that we have a time together and board facilitation to talk about what we, what, how we work together. We have some mighty big lifts going on right now and respecting one another in our different roles, respecting our staff and respecting our processes because we have to problem solve together because we are the board together is really important. Towards that end, I would really appreciate it if Ms. Angie could help us find a facilitator and that we target a board training day for this in August. Is it possible for Grace to work with your staff assistants to figure out? I don't know if I have to, like, all afternoon will do it, so you could still do your morning mids if you have them. Or if there will be a whole day that we can identify.
Can I maybe make a recommended?
Process?
Yeah, process modification to that. It's important that we do go through our procurement process, so I would need to get quotes and potentially maybe ask the board to establish a subcommittee to work with me through that process to bring back the recommended individual consultant for the board. I don't know if we can achieve, I think we can achieve this by August.
Yeah.
But we.
August would just be better for our workload, I think. That's my gut.
We can target.
That's, we target.
So. I'm a, I'm a blank piece of paper in terms of subcommittee on this.
Yep, yep, that's good, we've had a couple of.
Do you want me to work it with Jason or the procurement or?
That's what.
OK, OK.
So it's Jerry, you and Jason, or is it Jason, Jerry?
Nope, me and Jason.
OK, OK, that's fine, I just want.
Jerry didn't pick me off.
No, I just want to be clear.
Tried to let Jerry.
I also didn't raise my.
Noted.
OK, alrighty, I'll do.
Just because it's came up, you know, and just for a matter of public, the process of subcommittees is not to make decisions. The process of subcommittees is just from, just a pure matter of fact, getting the work done and bringing a recommendation back to the board.
Yep.
On the liaisons topic.
Yeah.
I, I am aware that the, I believe the LUT staff would like to have a backup for me for Region One Act.
Does, do the ACT bylaws allow that? Because.
I think they do, actually.
Your predecessor didn't allow us to do that.
Well. I've seen other organizations do it while I was a Region One Act member before and the LUT staff raised it with me recently, in part because I needed to be at that acre meeting, but I think it would just be smart for us to, I wanted to.
Since you're the main liaison, who would you like to see be your backup?
I'm open to anyone. I think the logical choices would be either transport, you know, because of Commissioner Fie's work in transportation on other fronts, either her or I know Commissioner Willie's been on the Region One Act filling in before, so to me, those would be the two most logical, but I don't have a strong.
I'm also a North West.
Yeah, right.
And I have acre responsibilities.
Yeah, that conflict with it all the time.
As well, so that's the.
So Commissioner Thrice is a definite no.
I'm a definite no.
OK, well, so I.
If you want me to do it, Jason, because I've done it before, so. As long as I don't have, because I had, when I was doing it, I also had.
Acre conflict.
So I don't have that now, so yeah.
OK.
She's laughing.
Maida, we're crushing it over here.
I don't even think I have my committee list. Oh, I sure do have it with me because I brought that February. Nope, that was in the January. February was our last roundtable. Yeah. Were there any other committees we need to sync up on?
Not that I'm aware of, but.
How's it going with ETV?
Good. Yeah.
Explorers.
Oh, silly me.
Oh, and can I ask real quick on that point? Seeing the newspaper coverage about the concert venue in in Portland for Live Nation, does that, I should talk to you about this in a one-on-one conversation. Yeah, I should talk to you there. OK. And it's not, there's no rush. I think our next one-on-one is July with my vacation coming up. Oh, I forgot, declaring potential conflicts of interest. Let's remember that county contracts with an awful lot of community-based organizations. And if any of us is serving on a board outside of, looking at Alex, because this may be new news for him, day three and a half in. If any of us are serving on boards outside of our board designations, we're about to approve a budget that contracts are reliant upon. And if we don't declare a potential conflict of interest, we're in trouble. So you're not on a, you're not on a nonprofit board outside, you are? That's not the board.
That's one of our.
Committee, isn't it?
No, but I didn't know because it was on the money side of it and they do give them money. We don't make any of those decisions, but I just, so I'm just disclosing that just in case.
Is that different than, I, I mean, I'm officially assigned by the commission to sit on the board.
This is, this is.
Mine is not.
Time.
I mean, the same organization.
I was in that same spot.
But is the finance committee, is it commission of community action or a committee of community?
Committee.
So does that committee make recommendations to the board or does it make decisions?
Recommendations.
We make recommendations to the board and we approve the financials and the audits and employee benefits packages. So that comes through us and we make recommendations to the board to approve.
So you keep, you keep declaring that.
Well, I just want to make.
You're sharing it with us.
Full disclosure.
This is kind of like the second cousin twice removed from the other family.
No, but I was really glad you did.
I'm, I'm honestly just trying to understand for the future, like, I don't entirely care about your assignment there and I don't really view it as a actual.
And the OGP training says he is, he has no conflict.
That's what I, that's what I agree.
Being very diligent with us.
All right.
So, yeah. Yep. Great, let's keep doing well because if any of us has that, it's bad for all of us, so. Were there any other board norms I'm either forgetting to checkpoint in or where I'm not doing it as one of five?
I, I would just ask, I guess, the, because there's been so much discussion about this calendar visibility issue, I would ask that, not publicly, but I assume the staff assistants know where there's issues. I would ask them to make sure they're communicating to their commission member about whether there's issues related to that so that by Friday or whenever that is resolved. I'm concerned that whoever they're turned with may not know about it.
Oh, I've raised this in our meetings before.
I, I know, I'm just trying to get to action and.
But it's not their job to put it in place and it's not their job to hold us accountable.
I agree with all that.
So. Anybody has questions, come see me. That, you OK?
Yeah, well, and I was also going to say I will check in with staff assistants and then work with the chair too, so they don't have to carry that responsibility.
Yeah, I was thinking of it more just as an awareness.
Yep.
I understand your point.
Okie dokie. Did I already talk about next Tuesday's going to be a wicked long day? OK, OK, good.
Orange versus.
Any other Tuesday though?
Any other day where we have like 13 public hearings and three media action items?
See where the bar sits.
So, so on that note, Chair Harrington did work with staff, so the only item that we had for the afternoon was board and leadership. So we did add the 30 minutes executive session, so tentatively the schedule that'll go out first thing tomorrow morning has your recon work session at 2:15 for board and leadership and then 45 minutes for that and then 3 o'clock, the executive session depended on the flow. So your lunch for that day, I put in there at the direction of the commissioners based on where you're at in the meeting.
Oh, yeah, thank you very much. So. Our meeting could go till 5:00, right? Because we have multiple public hearings where we could have public testimony, we have public comment as well. And we have the HABAD meeting with the HABAD budget approval. So. So I've already talked about be prepared to go till 5:00 PM on lunch. I'll get really hangry if I don't start eating by noon, by 12:30 to be kind of fun about it. So. Are you guys? So by 12:30, do you want a half an hour lunch or an hour lunch? OK, OK. Jerry or Pam, you reach on a side of me, you may have to remind me.
OK. No worries.
Okie dokie.
We'll watch your hangry level.
I, I have a Starburst in my pencil kit there, so. Okie dokie. All right, federal level, federal complexity layer discussion.
Yeah, have lunch. Right.
So just start your lunch.
She did. She did, and I gave her the cover if it was going to be too loud for the commission, the hustling of paper, I would take that blame because she worked all throughout lunch, so Ann.
But we're here.
To be eating while we do this presentation.
How can you rescue me and eat your lunch any time?
It's how we roll, we can do all the things, all the things.
Magic.
So this conversation was actually placed on the roundtable agenda six months.
Oh, you're right, yeah.
Yep, November, December, we talked about putting it on the roundtable. So there, there has been a lot happening and so this is just kind of a status update that Ann and Marnie will take us through.
Kevin, can I say something first? Here we are, going through the last steps of finalizing our approved budget to an adopted budget. And we already have sadly, sad confidence level that the state is going to back up. Oh, I thought you were grabbing your lunch. Going in the, in the negative direction on funding for counties. And we have to figure that out. And I'm certainly going to need the reminder of generally when supplemental budgets land. But I also want to say through having now not quite six months of experience with our new administration, presidential, federal administration, how impressed I am with all of the staff leadership, all during those six months of learning about what, where things are at with agencies, the feedback you're getting from agency heads and the level of trust. I trust your continued leadership excellence. Not only with us, but our contract partners. It's incredible. I was reminded yesterday at the Woodland Hearth opening by Brian Guinea, our regional HUD director, that the, there was this thing called a subsidy layer assessment that needed to be completed in order for the Woodland Hearth closing to happen. And he had to pull out all the stops.
It's not a simple thing.
No, it's a very complex layering thing. People have lots of heartburn over it, but that needed to be done in order for the closing to happen two days later. But because of the excellence of our team, and frankly, his excellence too. He was able to do that and make those calls and get the federal office to respond. And that kind of work with contract partners, nonprofits, CBOs and community groups, they respect and trust our staff. And our staff always, without fail, follows our board direction. And in no case is it OK for us in any way to throw them under the bus or put them in anybody else's cross. And because of our execution as a board and working hard as a board to develop board positions, board priorities and board messaging, it's allowed our staff to apply their public service excellence to do this work. And as we embark on this really complicated federal stuff, not just as ourselves, but with every single current contract partner, every single nonprofit organization, community-based organizations and other groups that may not be in direct contract with the county, but know that they do work here in our area in the spirit of cooperation in different domains such as economic development groups, we're able to excel together. So. I wanted to make sure that I gave my full weight of appreciation for that work before we start rolling or you start rolling up your sleeves and take us, including me, through some really hard stuff. I know it's going to be hard, but I know we're going to get through it together.
I have a couple of words I just want to start before we get into this deck. First and foremost, this is a complicated time. We have a, we've had an opportunity to have us, an employee on our staff for the last few months that really has been critical to our success. And that person is William Bass, and I don't know if he's going to watch this or not, but he is our grants coordinator and he's working out of the finance office to look at all of our federal dollars. He, I don't know where he came from, he's like this magical, wonderful human who showed up one day.
Thank you for joining us, William.
Seriously, but he has changed the way we look at our money. And I really appreciate his thorough knowledge on how to track it, how to understand it, how to value it. He's been really incredible. We've had some incredible humans in HHS and in HUD over the last few months who've also really stepped up. And I, I know there are a lot of them and I usually don't just name one, but I want to name one, which is Shannon Bays. Shannon, every time we have tried to dig into numbers and look through things and understand them, Shannon has repeatedly stepped up to help us understand what we're doing with our dollars in the most impactful ways to humans in our community. And I really value her and I just wanted to call that out.
Dollars to humans, dollars to people.
Yeah.
Shannon is the administrative manager in HHS.
So with that, we, we put together a couple of slides, this is high level. We are, we just wanted to make sure that you all were seeing the things that we were seeing. So. To begin, maybe.
Are these in the packet now, Kevin?
Yes, they are.
OK. But this is, could I, please, I'd just like to ask, this is the first, as we go through this, it's just now in the packet and the public is just now seeing this at the same time.
Correct.
I just want to lay that groundwork.
So I missed lunch because Marnie and I wrote this, so and I know I'm more telling people like this is totally. But this is, this is all very new and very fresh, so I just want people to know, like, we're, we're running on the fly at the moment. And so this is, we're going to try and keep all of you as up to date with the newest information as possible. And this is not.
Is it clicker on?
Oh, and while he's working on that, I'll just keep thinking, people. One of the most impactful, just so people know, Marnie has been truly leading us as we've done hard things over the last month and tried to figure this out. So I just want to thank her. Go for it.
We are working from various slide decks, so thank you, Alex, for leaning over and saying, is this county council slide deck? No, this is county council, finance, multiple departments that had contributed to this. So I just want that as a note of a record because if you look at even the footnote on this slide, it just says county council. We're going on the.
He said it.
Don't worry, don't make it look.
Which would be, it.
It doesn't have our normal template and.
Right.
footer and header and page number check.
So how about this, for the record, instead of county council, it should say one Washington County.
So how about this, for the record, instead of county council, it should say one Washington county. It did take a village for this one. So just a little bit about background. So when we place this on the agenda, we were at a point of unknown. We were hearing a lot coming out of the federal government. We did not have a total grant dollar number. We were kind of a bit out of sorts. We were not able to tell you a concise story.
We, we hadn't seen attestation language at that time. We were just seeing rumors and ideas about what might be coming down the pipe. So just to be clear.
We had signed all previous grants back in, well, in the months prior. And we really didn't have any grants that we were looking at until recently, over the last few weeks, where we started to realize how some of these expectations would be now. The state of Oregon has been participating in a lot of conversations. They are doing, they're participating in litigation strategies across the United States, especially, I think they just joined Seattle. They've done things in Washington State and other places. As you know, we have a very delicate balance in our, in our funds at the moment, in our general fund and other spaces that you're about to approve. So we have been looking for opportunities where we can support other litigation, but we do not currently have the ability to lead these or haven't today. Litigation will take time. So what you're seeing, and I would actually ask Alex, if you wouldn't mind just stepping in to say what's kind of happening on the litigation front in the country.
Sure. So I mean, there are hundreds of cases across the country challenging various policies from the current administration. Some of them revolve around the subject matter that we're talking about today. But each of those are particular to the funding stream and contracted play in the particular jurisdiction that has brought the litigation, their policies, programs, services, et cetera. So it's, it's hard to, you know, compare to a one, one-to-one comparison between jurisdictions. But that litigation, for the most part, is in its infancy. Certain pieces of litigation have made their way through the appeals court process up to the Supreme Court, but those are all on preliminary matters. For the most part, preliminary injunction, preliminary injunction relief, which is just the first step of the litigation process. So to date, those have not, those cases have not been their way through the full course of litigation to a judgment on the merits. So it's a lot of wait and see right now to see how some of these cases turn out. I hope that was.
Kevin, do you have the?
You just say next slide. Brandon will take care of us.
So what we've been looking at in preparation for this discussion since we met with you all is we've looked at, a couple of months ago, there was a list of words that started circulating around things that the current administration felt were problematic. We used that list to do an initial assessment on our website. And that initial look pinged about 15,000 times on our website. This is not a comprehensive list. I want to be clear, like, these numbers are going to shift and change with time. Some of our websites were not checked, like, we realized that WCCLS and some of the others, because they're not under our website, were not checked. So this is really on our primary site.
Would you clarify for us and the public, how many, how many words were on that list approximately? And I know that that.
I, I've been, I've been loosely using, there's over 150 words on that list.
I just think that.
Yes.
Context is important.
Yes. And, and some of the words are out of context, so words like green or women or affordable housing. So it, it's just a list of words that several organizations have said could be words that put us at risk of losing the federal funds. So.
Thank you.
That, it was just the first glance.
And we've also had a lot of conversations. This is where I call in Erin Doyle. She's been working with VSA to have conversations about what she's hearing in Washington DC. They're looking at legislation in Congress to better understand what the expectations are. We're running into an interesting position where there are laws, some of the words on that list are also codified in federal law. So some of those words are actually ADA-related or civil rights related. So we have two different spaces where VSA is really helping us understand the difference and nuance in that. And then we've been analyzing our full fiscal impact. And so I wanted to just explain the 130 million-ish so that you all understand what that number is. And I'm going to make sure I get this. So we anticipate expenditure of over 130 million in federal dollars in fiscal year 25. Of these federal dollars, approximately 90% are from direct federal funding. So we receive those dollars directly from the federal government. And then 10% are passed through from, through state and other, mostly state dollars. We receive funds from 10 federal agencies, the largest share of those funds, about 70% is to, is from HUD. And examples of that are the Home Investment Partnerships, Community Development Block Grant, and Housing Choice Vouchers. Yes. Assistance. Yep.
That's the, the Housing Choice Vouchers is rent assistance. Thousands of people.
Yes.
I'm never, I'm always reminding myself, people use our services. Our services are aimed at people. There are always people impacted. Whether they're community people or employees. Everything is about people.
Next slide. So I'm going to turn over to Marnie, just to talk about some of the program.
Yeah. Some of the, the program, programming, and this isn't a comprehensive list, but it's a, a broad stroke of the programming that could be impacted. So we just talked about the Community Development Block Grant, which is really a grant designed to help support areas and so that they, they are more livable and address poverty and homelessness in those areas. And that, that grant is completely at risk, could be potentially eliminated. We just talked about the HUD rental assistance, transportation projects. We receive, I can't remember the number, but I think it was 11 million dollars in federal transportation funding. And we're concerned about, like, for example, the Council Creek funds that we've been counting on to move that project forward.
11 million is 2025 numbers.
So we'll get you the exact, that was the last time I checked.
But approximately.
Approximately.
And these are for full construction. So those dollars span years. And that's why I wanted to be really clear about the 130. That is what we are expecting to expend this year. But we are also receiving chunks of money that spans multiple years, fiscal years.
Right. And then women, infants, and children, the WIC program, that is funded through USDA, a federal grant. It does come through the state, but it is a federal grant. That, those funds, funds are at risk completely, as well as new guidelines around who we can serve and who we would not be able to serve, which puts women and their infants or young children at risk. Maternal child health and family services, a lot of our nurse home visiting services are really blended federal funds with state funding. So those could be eliminated or reduced significantly. Anything related to climate resiliency planning, whether it's through the Fed, through LUT, through our support, our procurement office, anything related to climate resiliency, climate planning could be at risk. And that includes our ability to respond to inclement weather events. Things like providing air conditioning and also just having the funds to set up cooling stations, for example, could be at risk. Preparedness services, our public health preparedness and emergency management receive federal funds, both directly and indirectly, to assure that we're prepared for all sorts of emergencies.
Wildfires, for example.
Wildfires, for example, yes. Prevention and response to preventable and communicable disease, particular concern about vaccine-preventable diseases. And we blend our funding with state funding and county general funds to respond to all communicable disease. So things like tuberculosis, measles, pertussis, or whooping cough. Chickenpox vaccination.
HIV testing and.
HIV testing and counseling, harm reduction services, all of those are blended with large amounts of federal funding supporting that. And then in the DA's office, reliance on federal funds for bias and hate, hate crime prevention and intervention. So these are, these are real services that are at risk, both from threatening to withhold funds and the language that's coming across in contracts related to executive orders that saying that we must follow.
Next slide. Can we turn this over to you?
Sure. So these are a couple of examples, but by way of example for your board, just some of the, the specific contract languages coming over. Health and Human Services currently has the grant policy statement, which was released in April 2025, which requires a civil rights assurance for HCS grants. That says in part, recipients must comply with all applicable federal anti-discrimination laws material to the government's payment decisions for the purposes of 31 USC 372, which is also known as the False Claims Act. The False Claims Act allows the government, or in some cases, private parties, to sue entities if they believe that those entities falsely received money from the government and claw that money back, in some cases with troubled damages. It goes on at a later point to talk about the grant award certification. By accepting the grant award, recipients are certifying that, this is just an example. They do not and will not during the term of this financial census award operate any programs that advance or promote DEI, DEIA, or discriminatory equity ideology in violation of federal anti-discrimination laws. And they do not engage during the term of this award in discriminatory boycott. So that's just some, that's just some example language for you. It's publicly available on the federal Health and Human Services website.
Did you, did you? You mentioned the concept, I believe, of the identification of any falsehoods on the attestation could be identified by the federal government or any person not related to the federal government. Is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner.
And I'd like, I'd like you to talk a little bit more about that because I think it, it, it helps us focus on what our exposure is here.
Sure. So the False Claims Act is, is the purpose of the act is to ensure that any money that the government expends when it should not ends up coming back to the US government. Therefore, it essentially deputizes private citizens to bring what's called a KTM action. They can file a case against the entity they believe has made a false claim and potentially share in the sum of damages from that. Does that answer your question?
It does, but I, I really want to make sure that we're, we're lifting this piece up because I think it's, it's something that we haven't seen as a society before. And the, the concept of deputizing the public to expose issues where we may or may not have been purposeful in an attestation is, is really interesting. And not only does it deputize them, it incent, there's an incentive factor with participation in the damages, is my understanding.
That's correct.
So I just want to say it out loud one more time because this part actually is something that I've never seen before. And I don't think anybody in this room has.
Well, I, I just want to underscore, from a staff perspective, and even in discussions with county councils, long-term county council members, they have never seen anything like what we're experiencing at this point in time with contracting with the federal government. This is really unprecedented, just in general, from a magnitude standpoint.
I have a question. Sticking with this first line and domain and what you read off. So we strive to, we don't, I mean, I took a note of office that said I will adhere to all federal laws, state laws, and Washington County code. I'm far more well-versed, I wouldn't, shouldn't say well-versed. I'm far more familiar, given the number of years, with the Civil Rights Act, ADA, those pieces of legislative, legislation. There's also the executive order that makes it very clear. And so what, in my mind, what I'm coming to with all of this is we're being given the directive as a county government to attest that we're not doing those things. And in that grant language, also obeying the Civil Rights Act with all kinds of other pieces that I may not remember, but know you certifiably smart people.
So can we have Marnie respond to where these clauses came from? Because this is, these are specific to specific, what we're seeing specifically in individual contracts at this point.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
These two clauses came directly out of attestations in the CDPG and HUD funding. And, and the other thing that, if I may, I want to point out, because I've gotten this question from departments and beyond, is some people say, see the words, "will not use federal funds" or "will not use grant funds." And what I want to say about that is that there is, there is no way for us to say, we just won't use federal funds for this. We'll use other funds because that would be me saying, you can go to a training, you don't get to because you're funded by federal funds. And half of you can go because you're blended, you have blended funding, so you can go to half the train. I mean, and being a little bit ridiculous, that our funds are so blended. And then in addition to that, all of our special fund programs pay indirects into the internal services funds. And we can't separate that out. So.
So I'm the tip of the spear, whether or not it's funded to or not.
So I, I just, because that question comes up, can't we just say, well, we can, we can target certain programs or activities? And there, we just absolutely are unable to do that.
Completely impractical.
Yes, yes.
Those two.
Yep.
Doesn't matter which.
Yep.
I'm just grateful that you all dig into this detail. And if you say yes, I say yes on them. And if you say no, I say no on them because you're not going to let me do anything. It's illegal.
So Chair, that is the totality of what we had to share with you today. If there are any questions, we're happy to take them. Otherwise, we have another presentation.
I have a question. Let's go with the first bullet. Are we, Washington County, is Washington County using federal or state funds to violate anti-discrimination laws right now? Are we breaking that law?
It, it depends on what anti-discrimination law you're referring to.
It says right there, violate any applicable federal discrimination law. Are we breaking any of those laws? We haven't had a need to attest.
No. No, I think that the concern comes in when, when they also are including language that points to the executive orders. So it's not one or the other in these attestations. They're not separating it.
We do not meet the standards as provided under the executive orders.
So you're saying that we're breaking applicable federal anti-discrimination law?
No, I'm saying that we are breaking executive orders in which they discuss diversity, equity, and inclusion.
It says federal funds should not be used to promote these activities or activities that violate, right? So where are we using money?
We're not violating, we're not violating federal anti-discrimination laws, period. That does not mean we're eligible for these grant funds according to the federal administration.
And to the new.
Whether we like it or not.
We did not have to sign this level of language for the last round. We met those standards, and we have not signed for this standard.
I, I think the issue really, to address Commissioner Fies' question, is timing. This means that we aren't in violation because any money that we receive at this point, we didn't have to attest to. This means that we aren't in violation because any money that we receive at this point, we didn't have to attest to. And now we do. And now we do, just because the law's in place, it applies to future contracts where we sign. But, and that's what we're, that's what we're looking.
And what I'm saying, just to be clear, and I'm not trying to make it more, we have attested every year that we are going to adhere to federal administration anti discrimination laws. And we could do that today when they add and including the executive orders, that's where we're in trouble.
Because that includes things that didn't used to be in there.
Correct.
Defines things in ways that are maybe.
Yes.
Not what we would have typically expected.
Yes, yes.
But to me, in, in, in terms of, I, I did a little bit of reflection on this since our executive session. And I think what I come down to, are we breaking the law or not? Are we breaking any law, state laws, federal laws? And it came down to no.
Today?
Yeah.
Yeah, but the concern is what about July 15?
No, I'm saying July 15th, this current language, because I think there it's, it's a bit of a, yes, it's debatable issue. I, I recognize that.
But I, I think.
But we're not breaking any law if we sign this.
So I'm, I'm not an attorney, but I should probably let Alex speak. But I, I think, you know, if they wanted to, in theory, the feds could say, you're going to do backflips five times a day if you want this funding. And if we sign and say, we're accepting the funding and we agree to do that and we don't, we're in trouble. So I mean, I'm using a ridiculous.
Chair, I, I think we're getting pretty close to legal advice in this. For, I would recommend this. Want to continue this?
But what I clearly understand from the public session is there is work that we would like to continue doing or grants that we want to pursue now. One set is due, due for applications before the end of this month. And there are others continuing in with the beginning of the fiscal year. And we have to adhere to this latest attestation test for those.
And the attestation test can be different for each grant or contract we receive.
Yes.
And we have to, when we attest, we are agreeing to all, all the words.
All the terms.
In the sentence. This is a direct copy and paste from the HUD and CDBG contracts. I'm looking at Marnie for the nod to make sure that I know directly where they came from. So we are attesting to the full language that is on this slide, not just a portion of it.
Yep. And grant language, it's right out of the publicly available contracts. So I don't, you're correct. I don't want to venture into legal advice, but I, as one member of five, and I think I'll ask that all my colleagues understand and agree that we understand that in order, as a county government, to do the attestation, that these are the terms we have to agree to. You okay with that, colleagues on my right and left?
I, I don't agree with that, but we can go to executive session.
Well, as a board majority, we understand that our legal counsel is, has told us that we are going to have to adhere to this standard. And we know we need, in order to continue providing services, we're going to have, using those funds, we're going to have to. So.
Okay, alternative would be to not accept the funds.
Yep. Not only, yeah, and that means.
Impacts to people.
Yes. Yes. And organizations that we provide funding to in order to deliver those services. Are there any other slides?
Technically, then you wouldn't be able to give them those money because they meet these requirements.
I, I'm not sure I understand what you're saying. Or what you're.
Yeah, that you, you said that to give, we won't be able to, I was responding to your comment about we wouldn't be able to give money to organizations that really depend on county to get funding to continue to serve community members, especially historically marginalized communities. And the point I was trying to make.
Wait, 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 wait. We are not attesting everything that those organizations do. We are only attesting that as a county government, we've attested for ourselves and for the contracts that we have, would have in place using those federal dollars with other organizations. We're not attesting for those other organizations.
If you sign this, correct me if I'm wrong, Alex.
We're going to have to take that to executive session.
Yeah.
Okay? Let's make sure you hold your question.
Yeah, I'm concerned going into uncharted territory here, so we can go to executive session. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. That's all we had. Are there any further things like of us?
Today's Thursday. We're going to have to have an executive session Tuesday afternoon. Okay? So we.
Oh, we, sorry, we have one this afternoon.
I was going to say.
Yes.
Okay, we'll take it to executive session. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for continuing to provide clarity in a very foggy world. We've got, what, what's your question?
Well, I.
We have this topic and this topic. Yeah, I was just wondering if.
So if your board just says a matter of practice, if you wanted to move into executive session to continue this conversation, now that's up to.
I don't, because I need to be informed by the next topic.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, all right. We're at 1:30, so we actually took a little less time than that. But the next one's going to be a long topic. Could we take a five-minute bio break and come back at 1:35? Great, thank you. There's too many of us worked over lunch. Because you know, our IT beagles do wonderful things with technology. Okay, we've got the thumbs up. We are good to go. We're all going to learn together about access and opportunity with our very own Alicia Sojourner. Please take it away.
Great, thank you. For the record, Alicia Sojourner, Director of Access and Opportunity. I still have to pause on occasion with that. So I just want to first just say thank you for having this conversation. This is, as you know, a hard conversation to have, but my hope is as we talk about our journey with access and opportunity, it will open more doors and maybe more understanding of where we're hoping to continue to grow and ultimately support all of our community members. Before I jump into this, I do want to say that the journey that the, you all as commissioners have taken, as well as staff in advancing equity inclusion has been amazing. And we have seen many great outcomes. And so I just want to hold that in place and honor that because the work has been great for years. And so I do want to just pause and honor all of that hard work. I also know that this conversation comes with a wide range of thoughts, feelings, and even grief in some ways. And so I also want to just honor those feelings as well because it's, it's real. And as you have said multiple times, this is about people. And I'm sure that's why there's, there's lots of feels there.
Well, and if, if I could also contribute from sort of this side of the table. It has been a very positive journey. It's not without hard learnings. I've learned a lot more about history. And history is what led to my being here today. And so having a better his, having, having a better appreciation for history and what has led to today has been very beneficial to me as hopefully a thought leader and it certainly is a decision maker. So thank you.
So.
Oh yeah, the clicker, still trouble with the clicker.
Just turn it off and turn it on?
Yeah. Just, we just. There you go.
Um, can I, can we just take one pause before we continue? So I'm getting pings. Are we experiencing internet outages or clerk muck?
I have, I have since 12:30.
The in, the internal network is, is having issues. You can get to outside sites, but not the internal county ones. So IT is aware of it and they're trying to.
I haven't been able to get to the county website.
Yeah.
So are individuals able to watch this meeting?
This, this is still going out on Zoom and YouTube, so they can get to it there.
Okay. Thank you, sorry.
Internal people should look to Zoom or YouTube to watch this.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that, because I suspect we have internal people watching. So if someone, can we talk through this for a second? Because the only way I know to get the Zoom link is to hit the Washington County website. And if I can't get to the Washington County website, I can't hit the Zoom link. But if I go to YouTube, there is a channel called Washington County, Oregon. Right? It's good information. And I would look for the current.
You're looking for the live feed on there.
Okay. Thank you very much for stepping me through that. Okay. Thank you.
Sorry for.
No, that was exactly what we needed.
Announcement.
Yes.
We will continue.
Yeah, thank you.
So I want to just start off by saying that you will have access to this PowerPoint. So some of this stuff I'm not going to read in big details. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these first two slides. But this slide is really laying out our foundation within the United States around social justice language over, over the decades. Starting off with, you know, things that we know, like all men are created equal. And sure, there's maybe another conversation about that line. But also going through, through civil rights, affirmative action. When I first started in my career a few years ago, we were talking about multiculturalism. And so the journey around this language has shifted and evolved over time. Now what we are seeing is we're in a, in a space right now that people had, don't have a true understanding of what diversity, equity, and inclusion truly is and the great impacts it has. And so currently we're in a space that those particular words are being misused and even sometimes creating polarizing conversations. And so that has clouded some of the work around it. But here at the county, we are still focused on what really matters and people. here at the county, we are still focused on what really matters and people matters. Successful outcomes matter. Changing systems so everybody cannot just get into the doors, but actually be heard and participate once they're through the doors. Where we are rooted in removing barriers for everybody and really value people regardless of who they are and their past lived or current lived experiences. For us, we are really grounded in our value-based outcomes and supporting and meeting every person where they're at. So in comes this evolving evolution from inclusion, equity and inclusion to access and opportunity. When we think about access, we are talking about ensuring that public services, programs, employment practices are free from unnecessary barriers, whether they're physical barriers, procedural, digital, language barriers, that all people are informed and are able to participate in the government process. When we talk about opportunity, we are talking about building a lasting multi-generational system and pathways that enables individuals to thrive and have fair procedures and practices, thoughtful planning, and well-designed policies that improve outcomes across all communities and as well across all departments. Because this is also about not just our community members, but our staff as well. So an example, I just want to share that a community member recently said to me, they were saying that they can get into the building very easily, but they still don't know if they're heard once they're in the building. And so when we're talking about access and opportunity, access gets them in and opportunity helps them thrive. And so that is really the root of what we've been doing and that we want to continue to do.
There's another example that was provided to me when I was a metro counselor in terms of the evolution then. And that was, it's one thing to have a career ladder. Right? It's another thing to ensure that people have the opportunity to try different roles or different responsibilities that help them build the the skills and the track record in order to attain that next level.
Yep, 100%.
Okay, thank you.
So this evolution of access and opportunity was purposely designed and aligned with our Design the Future and our One Washington County vision. Our, we know to get to our vision of One Washington County, access and opportunity is a key strategy. There are many other strategies, but this is a a strategy to help us get there, having this shared purpose across the organization among you all here and the community. It's really about how we improve our services for all and how we support each other as coworkers as well. So I think of this personally as a sys- like a system upgrade. As an Apple holder, I have iOS upgrades, I think, every month sometimes. And this, I think of this as our system upgrade that we're plugging in, we're running stronger and being more connected to our community, really listening and getting and making sure those opportunities are ripe. So when they're, so when they're coming, they're not asking for it. It's there when they come. This evolution is still also, and I know the equity resolution is a longer conversation, but this is also still rooted within that resolution, the themes and the purpose of that resolution. It is centering fairness and access. It's looking at how do we co-create solutions? So instead of doing for the community, there are there, we create more opportunities to create collectively with the community. We are not starting from scratch when we're thinking about access and opportunity. We are really just amplifying our commitments to fairness, to civil rights, to being responsive, and to our human-centric approach. All of those things remain on change for us and how they will show up within our systems and actions. So
It's, I appreciate your reminding us about where things are rooted or centered. I don't, I didn't spend enough time way back when in the crafting of this in January towards our action in February of 2020 to think about what the reference name or reference month number might be like looking ahead in future years. So in retrospect, I wish now, much like we have an R and O, we keep referencing for a resolution in order. We keep referencing the CWS and I know it as RNO 25 dash five. And because it's it's the content of the resolution that's important, not the reference name or label. And now, now I see that. So I know Clerk Moss has all kinds of catalog numbering using Board Clerk expertise. So I don't know what the number was, but I do remember it was February of 2020. So from here on, we just call it the February 20, yeah, February of 2020. So it's the February of 2020 thing and we're going to have a new one in 2025.
Yes, yes.
So I hope some very smart person such as yourself is thinking about the 2030 version of it because you're going to be in a whole new decade. You're going to have a whole new decade to look forward to. I'm just looking forward to getting to it.
Me too. So I've been saying, because we're reaffirming our roots, I love good metaphors. So excuse me for all my different metaphors I will probably be using today. But I think of this like I compare it to like a garden. We're not pulling up our garden and and retoiling the soil and adding something different. We are pruning our garden. So for healthier growth and resilience. And I think that's a big piece is that we want to make sure that when we are advancing access and opportunity, if we're going to think of this for multiple generations out, we need to have a system that's also resilient in how we work with our community members and with our fellow staff members as well. So this particular slide, I say, is somewhat the heart of this work. And when we talk about access and opportunity, right now, those are just words. And so we want to really share about how we're going to move from philosophy to this place of action. And access and opportunity becomes real when we are, as I said earlier, when we're designing with and not for our community, when we're supporting staff and supervisors with resources and tools to support the community and their coworkers. When we have shared language, and I think that's a big piece. What we are talking about is not just advancing access and opportunity, but creating a culture that access and opportunity is just part of our DNA. And any culture all has a shared language. And so making sure everybody understands what that is and also what it is not as well. Because that's the other piece to this. How can people understand what access and opportunity is not? And having regular evaluation with this work. So being able to say if an outcome did not improve, how do we do a continuous improvement? So we're all, so we don't get into status quo that we're always improving our systems and how we look at different things. Because what our community needs right now in 2025, I guarantee you will look different in 10 years and probably again in 20 years. So being able to evolve with that. So an example is instead of us saying, did we follow this process? We can say things like, did people actually get what they need to succeed? Whatever success looks like for them. So that's part of this journey and moving to a place of action. So when we're looking at access and opportunity and really looking at making this institutionalize, I approach all of this work through a change management lens. Where we are building the plane while we're flying the plane. And so while we're doing that, we want to be strategic about our approach and making sure that we are bringing people with us along the journey, our community members, our staff members as well. And so our, our outline is looking at four main phases. And I will say, as much as I would love our phases to happen instantly, if I had a Harry Potter wand, it would happen instantly. But this, this will take multiple years. We have a good foundation and we are growing on that foundation. So this first phase is really where we're at right now, starting listening. So right now we are listening to you all. We're listening to our staff members. We'll start, we'll be listening to our community members and really understanding what has gone well within our journey thus far and where is our opportunity to amplify and maybe do things differently. Creating tools and co-branding messages, so making sure that people understand. And while this is an overarching plan, what we don't have yet is like, like on this date, at this time, we shall do this. It's not prescriptive. But we do have real milestones that we want to hit as we're going through each of these phases. So this first phase is really just getting clarification, getting ownership and alignment across the organization as a whole. Phase two is going deeper into planning. So that would help. And this is when we're talking about launching. So creating that visibility, having the shared understanding. And this is when we're rolling out more resources, providing professional development, having more community engagement and even having tools that we pilot in different departments or with different teams to see what is working well and how do we improve on that.
This is all organization, like when you say departments, you're talking organization-wide, including like the Sheriff's Department.
Yes, yep.
Can you go back to the previous slide for a second?
Yes.
I'm, I'm stuck.
Okay, tell me more.
I understand. Can you go to phase two?
Yeah.
No, I understand the goal statement. Can you go back to phase one? Okay, this goal statement I don't understand yet. I understand that to be successful, there would be clarity, everybody's clear that there's ownership and alignment, all those things.
It's the what?
So what are, what are we establishing clarity on?
Clarity on when we say access and opportunity, what it actually means, what it looks like and what is the everyday practice of of creating access for individuals and making sure we're amplifying opportunities as well.
Okay, so now go to next, the the launch.
So this is
This is where
This is where we have what I would say more visibility. So now, now that we have this foundation around just access and opportunity, now this is a, this would be the time that we start having deeper conversations with community members about when we say access and opportunity, what does that mean for them? This is making sure that our staff have the tools and skills that they need to maybe take a policy and making sure that is, that there is accessible language within that policy. This is a area that when I can ask anybody in the sheriff's office or you all can ask anybody in facilities, you know, what does access and opportunity mean for you in your role? And they will have, they will have an answer and a understanding.
Phase two is like action, phase one is design and forming and norming kind of stuff.
That same thing, same language. Launch, I got. For whatever word reason on phase one being called plan, it's really the pre-launch design.
Yes, yeah.
That's, that's
We're on the launching path there.
That I'm planning, right? And and this one, you're, you're launching it internally, right? Phase one, you're, you're listening and designing. You're, you're designing based on feedback, ideas and feedback in phase one. Phase two is you're taking it full organization-wide to help folks get it down to ground level there each and every day.
Right, because right now, a lot of these conversations are still happening at the leadership level.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and part of this is moving the work into a One Washington County design. Because if you think about a community experience, the community is looking for the service. The vehicle of service delivery by what department? That doesn't, that's not the important piece. It's the receiving the service. So having our internal shared how we deliver the work is really that unified One Washington County approach. Even though we have subcultures from an operating stance, it is what is that overlay from a community experience and to help break down the barriers, getting to the true spirit of access opportunity.
Yeah, I, I'm with you.
Okay.
I'm through phase one and two.
Okay, now three, which is the normalization. So this is where there's more normalization. We're looking to reinforce our practices. This is an opportunity to see maybe where we have missing bricks within our work and really embedding this into not just our daily operations, but our culture as well. This is what I often say, this normalization phase, this is where we take our training wheels off and and sail forward, letting the wind blow us. This is also an area. This is also a place where we really see the office of access and opportunity being more of a coach and a capacity builder with the departments, with you all, and with our community as well. So
So this is, so people are actually using it in their day-to-day work, coming to you in terms of, oh, not quite sure how to handle, this is my imagination. Ha, handle different situations. You're providing coaching, further training and whatnot. Okay, that helps me understand why it's a year-long endeavor, right? Because what our business needs are, happens in different seasons, in different ways, at different times. So that's one reason why you need the whole year.
Absolutely. And what I've been, what I've been sharing with folks, when we think about coaching and capacity building from the Office of Access and Opportunity. And if you're not a sports fan, just bear with me. I think you'll, you'll get what I'm about to say. We are the collective Office and Office, Office of Access and Opportunity. Staff-wise, collectively, we have over 100 years of professional skills around coaching and supporting these different conversations and policies and procedures. So we have a really great playbook. So we will coach folks and tell them, get in the game and get to the goalpost. There will be times that we'll need to get in, get on the field and be the quarterback. But we're going to hike them the ball, the play, and they're going to run to that goal and make those scoring points. There will be times that we will be the cheerleader and cheer them on and celebrate. That's the one thing we don't, we don't do enough. Is celebrate the great work that is happening. So we will be those cheerleaders. And at times, we will put on our white and black striped shirt and be the referee and, and throw down that yellow flag and say, nope, mm, can't, off-size, timeout.
Playing the wrong game.
Yep, nope, this is not it.
Soccer rules don't apply here, huh?
Absolutely. So that's what we mean by that coaching and capacity building. Because this work is a forever journey. And we'll never just, there's no final destination, but we know the outcomes that we do want to see within our community. And then this last phase is truly, this is when it's operational. And the big thing with the operational piece is that, that there is still continuous improvement. As I said, just a few moments ago, in, in five years, 10 years, people will need different things, different topics, different issues will come up in the community. And so having that continuous improvement is very important as well. So, so in this operational piece, this is where we have normal feedback loops as just part of our operations. This is where we have more cross-departmental support and programs that are actually sustainable and doesn't feel like it's a add-on, but it's just part of, part of what we do. So I always compare it to a curb cutout. We would never put in a sidewalk without a curb cutout for ADA reasons. We would, we wouldn't even imagine redesigning a bathroom without accessible stalls. And even then, there's continuous improvement within ADA law. So this was, this would be what we're talking about when we're talking about that continuous improvement.
So the word that trips me up on that slide.
Yep.
Is operational. Because the previous slide, in your analogies, talked about, folks are using this in their everyday lives, in their projects over the course of the year. So it, it is being operationalized. But, so this is where I looked down in the key actions. What you're getting at is we're really checking in to see how that oper- was, operationalizing is going, how the operations are doing. And you're really focused on that check and improve.
Yes.
Great, phase two and phase three, as you're describing to the chair's point, have this in some layer of operation.
Yeah, yeah.
There's, yeah.
That's why the label trip to be up.
That's fair.
It's sort of like running, running full speed.
Running full speed.
Yep, yep. Yeah, while you're greasing the chain.
And doing repairs along the way, yep. And a big piece with this.
Separated from a UGO to.
And the big thing here is with that constant, constant continuous improvement, regardless of what is happening within our community, in the organization, in the world, that we have that built-in resilience that we can continue to still do what we want to do, which is ultimately serve every single community member and support our staff as well. And this is a high, a high-level picture of a similar process, but this is focusing solely externally. As we go through this, there will just be different touchpoints that we will be working with the community as we go through this. But as you know, this shift is not just eternal, it's also external. And so we right now have a lot of great things working for us. We have some great pro, um, community programs from boards and commissions, our volunteer. Like we have some really great ways people can engage and participate. And we also know that we have opportunities to improve access. So an example is when a, a resident in a rural area should not have to maybe drive all the way to Beaverton to get a particular service. How are we thinking about community members, you know, geographic in different areas? And making sure that all community members have access to services without, you know, needing to drive across the county or needing to come into this building multiple times to get one thing checked off the box? I'm not saying those things are happening, but those are those things that.
My district would be very interested in that.
Guess what? Several of us have identified South County, as we refer to it, since 2019.
Yep. And a big piece of this as well is building public trust. And not just public trust with like one particular person in the county or one particular department. Is that when they say that Washington County, they are trusting us as a whole. And not just because they have a really good relationship with, you know.
One department.
One department or one person. Because when that person leaves, that trust can break. So this is also about building authentic trust with community.
Well, if it's dependent on the one person too, it's probably, you haven't achieved the culture change that we're hoping for either.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, the idea of longevity too, track record, longevity, yep.
This is, this is, I mean, we're in the long game in government. And we're here to serve folks seven generations out. So that's part of this journey as well. And so just closing, I just want to have a few more points here. By us truly centering access and opportunity, we are carrying forward our, our history while also making, making this tangible for today and for multiple generations out. This isn't just an evolution of our language, but this is also an evolution of our systems, how we're gonna, how we're gonna be accountable to our community members, but also accountable to staff. And ultimately having the best outcomes for any person that comes into this, into Washington County. I do, this is where I get a little bit cheesy, but bear with me. This is where I truly believe that we can ensure that Washington County doesn't just serve, but that we serve all community members just and fairly. Because just and fairness is actually at the core of everything that we do. And so this is the continuous, the continuous journey of having fair and just access and creating opportunities that matter.
Will this content be going to ACRE?
Yes.
Will ACRE get to have a different name?
That is a great conversation that we will most likely be having next.
At the retreat.
Yep, at the next, at our retreat coming up.
Yep. This will, this is not on the, on the agenda for this coming Monday, just for clarification.
No, I didn't expect that.
But it, it will be on the, on the agenda for the, for the retreat.
So, and just a matter of, just also clarification. ACRE has received a verbal update on this without the slide deck from Leisha and I at X State in one of the most recent ACRE meetings. And this is the slide deck. But what we wanted to make sure is that ACRE was not surprised as the budget was released. And also the evolution of our equity tool to the Access and Opportunity Initiative, which honestly uses, use the same questions as the budget equity tool rooted in civil rights law, language access.
So this is, to me, I'm taking this as the proposal. And it's taken shape, right? You've, you've moved from the paradigm evolution. We've seen it through the budget. It's now taken shape through this proposal. And they are a key advisory group with us, for us. And so I'm wondering, I have two questions to kick off any further questions and discussion. I, I read the document and I, I need to have the opportunity to sit with the slides a little bit. But I'm really wondering, I'm thinking there may be an opportunity for us as a board to have some further training about this. Because one of the things I was thinking about is, much earlier in the presentation, you talked about, well, there are things that access and opportunity are not. And I thought, okay, that's a test I'm going to fly. So that's where I think I could get some training or would benefit from a little training. And it may just be a short training session, but training nonetheless. And then, so I'm just putting that out there as a potential opportunity or need in the coming months. And it could just be a whole hour, nothing more. But really, the question is at this juncture, how can we help? I mean, I as one of five see, see this really is a great proposal. And I'm thumbs up on it and want us to keep going in terms of the next steps. But beyond that, I was like, okay, how do we help? So I'll just leave that as a question and make sure everyone knows the floor is open for comments and questions.
I think I made mine during the presentation. I do think that, I appreciated that you all did a verbal. I think this is more detailed content frankly than what came to the prior ACRE discussion. But I think it was good that that was phased and I hope they see this soon. And I don't have more questions or comments.
Thank you.
That's pretty good. I like the statement there. And I do think it is, this is much more clear on what it is and the message. So I like, good job.
Any other?
I have a comment. And thank you for this presentation. And I know the amount of work that's gone in behind it. And I appreciate that. And as we move forward here, I think that, you know, what, what comes to my mind is we've evolved so much over the past five years from the resolution, from all the things that, that we've been trying to do. We've, we've altered direction a little bit, but never a right turn or a U-turn or anything like that. But it has been, it has been an evolution. And for me, this is the time where I personally, as one commissioner and as the commissioner that works with ACRE, feels, it feels much more like a partnership. And what I mean by a partnership is that I sense that I am going to learn. I will change. I will move forward as part of, of what you presented with your help and with your direction. And I, I, I think that that's what comes through.
And with the community.
In ACRE. Yeah, that's, and that's what comes through with ACRE as well. And it's taken us a while to get to that, that position for a lot of really good reasons, for a lot of really, really good reasons and responsibilities and things that are, the former Office of OEICE was, was designed to, to do and, and provide action around. This feels much more like, okay, this is us. And how are we going to operate together? So that, that's the difference that I feel today with, with the Office of Access and Opportunity.
Thank you, Leisha, thank you for your wonderful presentation. We are, we're in an interesting time, 2025. You know, I'll be honest, I wish we weren't evolving. I wish we stuck to our guns and we stayed with equity and inclusion. But I understand the environment we're in. And I respect the subject matter experts and the research and the due diligence you did. And I accept the framing of access and opportunity. And as I said before, it's not about what you say, it's about what people hear you say. However, since we're, this is really about equity and inclusion and we're using legally defensible language to not trigger a conservative federal administration, which is the environment we're in, how do we also signal words to what equity and inclusion are? And the culture and the generations and the work that's been done to get where we are now? Things like anti-discrimination laws, things like empowerment. Words like, I, I, I really, you're my favorite two things that I picked. And I appreciate, I appreciate everything and I read it. And I meant what I said, this is a really legally defensible language. Good job. I, I like removing barriers because that does signal, right? I also really appreciated serving every community member with, I would have liked to see with respect and dignity. That's also another word that signals. So I, I really, I'm on this journey. I'm willing to get on this journey of figuring out legally defensible language to get around the current administration and some of the the disruptions we're experiencing. Because it's a new administration and there's, everybody has their wants and needs. So I'm willing to get on and see how we evolve and how we signal to the community that this is really about equity and inclusion still.
Not sure that's how I would characterize what I think we're doing here. But I just want to state that I think we're, we are evolving what we're doing. I think there's elements that are similar from an action perspective. I think your comment about dignity and respect is a really good one. And I'm guessing one that the team will take. But I, I, I don't feel like what we're doing here is doing something just to get around something.
Yeah, I think this has my core clarity. Yeah, I think this is much more clear.
So I want to state that very publicly.
That's even more problematic, but we'll get to that conversation then.
I agree with you, Commissioner Snyder. Um, particularly as lived experience is something that we each have. And is not defined by just some subsets of people. And I think that's one of the aspects of this that you've. Not just you have helped me understand, but I'll say that, uh. Generational members of our community here. Uh, a lot of them, uh, living in our rural community have helped me understand and appreciate. That they embrace, uh, the modern world and modern society. But they also identify they are part of modern society. And want to ensure that they are respected and have dignity or the opportunity of dignity as well. And I see that this access and opportunity model allows for everyone. That's the intention that you're trying to, that you're asking me to understand. Every individual matters. So, thank you.
So can I, I was kind of, I wasn't done with my comments. It's like I just got.
Oh, didn't realize that, sorry.
It's okay. I think Commissioner Snyder jumped in. Last thing I was going to tell you, you know, you're always, I think, um, I said a lot, uh, but I want to end on a good note. When I was reading this, um, in, when, when, uh, Tanya had turned the budget, Access and Opportunity came out. Uh, the, the. Is it a quote, a quote came to my mind that I've always really, since I learned it maybe 20 plus years ago. I've lived by it because it's something that is really true. And that quote is, abilities are nothing without opportunities. So I want to end on a good note.
I will just say, I will most definitely add their respect and dignity. And we will define it within Washington County, what we mean by that. That's part of that shared culture language is that we define what it means for us at Washington County. So, thank you. I'll most definitely add that.
Where, I, I'd like to. Since one person does not direct something for the whole. I'd like to see that come back to us.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so just forward, I want to actually recognize, Alicia. Um, what you saw here and her, what I feel is human-centered approach is how they approach their work on a daily basis. Um, um, they are part of not only our executive leadership team, but our county leadership team. And in conversations with our directors, our ACAs and others, we are better, um, together since they have joined the team. And so, um, they have taken time to listen to where departments are at. And also to start, um, that evolution of making sure that we are operating under a one Washington County. About four, um, the benefit of our community members. So, um, this is really the first time the board has had this opportunity to interact in this way. Uh, but just from my perspective, um, they are influencing our culture and who we are on a daily basis. So I just want to say thank you.
I think that partnership shows in so many ways. So I, I chose in watching the relationships that you have with the other AC. With other ACAs, department heads. And frankly, I've seen it firsthand in the acre meeting. So there is certainly a sense of partnership. And I think that's what I was getting to earlier as well. So you have mine, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could use an analogy. You know, we all need to stay hydrated, right? You haven't been here very long.
Oh, no.
But drinking out of that beverage container. Wow, that quenches the thirst. I didn't know like that. We use the sweater analogy all the time. Wow, that is, you know, we, we do want to keep growing, learning, evolving and excelling. In, as a, as a county and as a board member, serving our, our county. And you're joining one Washington County, Team One. Washington County has been, has been seamless, but it has also accelerated. What we're able to do together. So you and your team and the collaboration you have had with so many. I know it's not just the leadership team, thank you.
Well, we appreciate that. Thank you, thank you.
So, uh, we have an executive session coming up, uh, but before I do. I want to checkpoint, is there anything else I needed to, needed to checkpoint for today? Yes, Ms. Angie?
Can I just make an announcement for the board? Um, so.
Today's Thursday.
Thank you. Remember I'm in Warp Speed time, so please help me with that. So Friday, uh, we have our bond rating call, uh, yes, Friday as in tomorrow, our bond rating, uh, call. I appreciate Chair you being on the call and also Commissioner Snyder as, um, you are on the Audit Committee. Um, I will send out, once we have a final slide deck, just so the commission is all aware of, of. Just what is, what is shared, uh, with our, with Moody's. Um, this is the first time that I have been through this process while in Washington County. My previous jurisdictions bonding is a very common, um, financial tool that is used. So I'm not new to these bond rating calls. Within the conversation, uh, the conversation will be, um, led, um, primarily by myself, John Steyer and Stephen Roberts. I would ask that, uh, Chair and, um, Commissioner Snyder, especially when there's questions about our community demographics. Um, uh, the great economy we have here in Washington County. Um, even though some of our, well, some of our businesses are going through transition, but that's a natural cycle of the economy. And so providing that confidence is incredibly important, um, in these rating calls. Um, in addition, um, the reason staff are leading this call, it is not to take away from, um, your governance role. What the bond reading agencies typically want to see is strong management practice. So I will be giving more of an overview of management from myself, like just what are my credentials? What are John Snyder? Uh, uh, sorry, I was looking at you. Um, in our roles, because they want to have confidence in the bond execution, um, at the county. So, um, just thank you, both of you for making time available on your calendar. This is really important. Um, I come from the, um, the mindset coming from communities that have used this as a tool. Your bond rating, you hold really true and you continue to strive to keep a high bond rating. Um, so I think that is something that as, um, Anne is leading our revenue conversations. We, we need to include that in our conversation because that hasn't came out in our financial conversations with the board. Um, in the past, and just the importance of maintaining a high bond rating and what that means to interest rates, frankly, that's what it is. And there's also a piece of that from an economic development, um, perspective, what it means to prospective businesses looking to relocate. Um, to communities as well.
So having, um, the head, the elected head of whatever board or council it is. And having the person, a board designated from the Audit Committee. Is really excellent practice and standard practice as well. Um, it's, as you say, it's not about the political organization. It is about the county as part of the overall state, uh, and the affairs there. And, um. At, at most, and I don't expect it to come up, but it's sort of like the annual interview I get from our financial auditors. Do I suspect any waste, fraud or abuse? Or if I was to become aware of it, who do I think would be making me aware of it? How would it be handled, you know, and all of my confidence levels based on that? So, yeah. I, it's one of those meetings where other than saying my name, if that, or being introduced, I get to just sit and listen in my room.
Happy to do so. Thanks for making the time, both of you.
Anything else for today? So reminder tomorrow, not tomorrow. Tuesday of next week will be a big day. Long set of stuff will be going over and doing, uh, and, um. So please come, please spend time with your packets. Please communicate with Ms. Angie and her team if you have any questions or needs in advance. So they have a, a chance to attend to your needs in advance of our meetings. So without further ado, thank you everyone for your time in today's round table and the various things we explored. Uh, we do need to move to executive session. So I'm asking for a motion to proceed to executive session for Washington County. Pursuing to ORS 192.660 sub 2 sub F for the purposes of discussing exempt records. Do I have, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero and we will.